There we go. Okay, Rachel Christensen with HWC is on her way. She was stuck in traffic on 465, so she will be here momentarily. I'll just give a brief overview. This process all started back on my first day here, which was March, the end of March of 2024. We've gone through several public outreach processes. We had an introduction to the public here in this room. We invited input from people at other town events. We went through the Hayride event in the park last year, and we had set up a booth and we talked to lots of people, got lots of feedback from that. I think that's her now. I'm just giving a very quick introduction. In the public process, which you have in your presentation. We had focus group meetings where we divided the comp plan into sections. We had a residential section, we had a transportation section, commercial, all things 36 section, parks, trails, open space section. And we had individual meetings with stakeholders in those that had specialty area, you know, in those areas. And so we had a meeting to get ideas from them and gained a lot of information from stakeholders, stakeholders in our community on those topics. I'm going to turn it over to Rachel.
Okay. Thanks for your patience.
I know that I'm going to be repeating things that she has in her presentations.
Yes, um, yes.
If you could flip that up.
Rachel, do you want to say your name and who you're with?
Yes, absolutely. My name's Rachel Christensen. I am with HWC Engineering. We were hired to do the comprehensive plan for the town of Avon. So thank you for having me tonight. Have a presentation that I'll walk through. This presentation is almost exactly the same presentation that was given at the special meeting for the, with the Plan Commission back in, was it August? In August.
August 14.
All right. And if I, if I'm talking through things and you have questions, please feel free to slow me down so we can kind of talk through whatever your question might be. Or if you just want to hold until the end, that's okay too. Either way works. Let's see. Oh. Oh, thank you. So what I'll be going over is just an overview of the comprehensive plan, why we do it, what the purpose is. And then I'll walk through that planning process that Linda kind of gave you a little brief overview on. I'll tell you a little bit about the community engagement process that we went through and some of the feedback that we received through that. And then I'll give you an overview of the plan, just a plan summary. We won't go into detail on every part, you know, part and piece of it. But if there's anything that you have specific questions on, we can certainly take a deeper dive in. And then we'll kind of talk about just the next steps in the adoption process. If we can flip to the next slide and the next one. So a comprehensive plan overview. Hopefully this isn't everyone's first rodeo on a comp plan, but if it is, it's a long range guide for community growth, development, and investment. And this is a document that's used by many people within the community, not just the town council, the Plan Commission, but your, your staff, organizations within the community, and even property owners when making decisions about investments into the town of Avon. As for legal requirements, there's three things that a comprehensive plan must have. And that is objectives for future development, a policy for land use development, and then that policy for the development of public ways, public lands, and public utilities. So I would say one of the more important things that comes out of this comprehensive plan is that future land use map. And that really helps guide decisions that the Plan Commission will have and that the town council will ultimately have on things like rezones. And then lastly, the plan purpose. So as we're going, as we were going through the planning process, you know, it's really important to understand your current community conditions. And there's lots of things that have happened since the last comprehensive plan was put into place. You know, we've had a pandemic, we've had housing prices that have really skyrocketed. And then there's been a lot of growth in the town of Avon itself. So it's good to take a look and, you know, get a snapshot of all of that as to where we currently are as a community. We also want to set clear, a clear vision and goals for the plan. And then with those clear vision and goals, we want to set actionable projects to help implement that vision. So it's not just talking about these great and wonderful things that we want to do. It's how do we actually get those things done? And that's one of the things that we were really hoping with staff and the steering committee to accomplish with this plan. Next slide, please. And the next one. So the planning process, there was a four-phase process that we went through over the past year or so. In the first one, we really started pulling everyone together. We had a steering committee that helped guide this process. We did our data collection and kind of a demographic profile and had our first steering committee meeting. Then we moved into phase two, which was the one where we, we call it reach a consensus, but that's the phase where we did a lot of public engagement. With this, we had a project website, we did a video at the beginning, there was a public workshop. We had an online survey, a yard side program. And that kind of ended, that phase ended with a public participation report that summarized all those things that we did within the community in regards to outreach. The third phase is really where the, I feel like the meat and potatoes happens of the comprehensive making process, comprehensive plan making process. You know, we finished up our existing conditions report, so looking at all those current things that were going on in the community. We ended up having a land use workshop, which was really great. We took a deeper dive into that future land use map and talked through that. We also developed a couple of focus area plans, actually four to be exact. We looked at how your current ordinance was functioning and maybe like, we looked at the, kind of the, the goals and kind of the objectives that were starting to come out of the plan and how that did align or not align with your unified development ordinance. And then we did produce that first draft of the comprehensive plan. Now we're in this last phase, which we're kind of rounding the corner on things, which is exciting. We did produce a public draft of the comprehensive plan that's been available for the public to review. We did that public presentation back in August. Prepared a final draft, which is what you guys have in your hands tonight. We did go to Plan Commission just this past month and had a favorable recommendation to the town council. So, you know, we'll be looking at, you know, obviously adopting this and seeing what your feedback is. We can go to the next slide. Community engagement overview. So I kind of told you a little bit about some of the, the things that we did to engage the community on this planning process. We did an online survey and we did get 607 responses, which we thought was a really good number. The public workshop, not a ton of participants, but we did have 16. And even though it was small, they were mighty. They gave us some really good feedback at that session. The focus group discussions were very well attended and we got a lot of good feedback from those. So 27 in total. We did a pop-up event, which we had 122 comments on the boards that we had posted there. And then at the time of when we wrapped up phase four, we had 268 views on that project website. I am sure there is more at this point because we've had that public draft up and people have been able to visit it still in the whole duration of this project. Next slide, please. Just some comments, you know, that we got on that online survey. We had an open-ended response area where people could type in, you know, what they thought. And I would say overall, there's a lot of pride in living in Avon. People love your schools, they love the trails, they want more. Obviously, US 36 comes up over and over again, so that was not a shocker. So, next slide, please. Public workshop. This was, these were just some little snippets of things that we got posted on the boards at the public workshops. Safe place to live, you know, good police department in schools. You know, some people are, were consistent with that online survey, talking about trails and sidewalks and wanting more of those and for them to be safe. Loving their neighborhoods. We can go ahead and go to the next slide. The focus group meetings, we had, let's see, four, five, six, seven, eight topics in total. And we had these as basically hour-long sessions with your community experts. So we, we developed lists with staff on, you know, who do we need to have at the table to talk about transportation in Avon? We had a parks and recreation section, session, jurisdictional relations and utilities. We specifically had one on US 36. Development ordinances, we talked about that with some of your local developers. We had an arts, culture, and placemaking group, economic development, and then also a housing and neighborhoods group. We can go to the next slide. We went to the pop-up event and, which was a ton of fun. We had a lot of like families participate and kids, like I love this picture of these little girls. I think they were saying they wanted more cats in town, which I don't know, but. Wanting things to do after school, you know, they love getting candy in the park, they love the parks. And it wasn't just kids, there was lots of adults that came to this too and gave us some really great feedback. And we had lots of discussions with your community members and it was a great way to get them more engaged in the comprehensive planning process and just kind of educating them as to why this is an important process for the town. Next slide, please. So through all of that, we had some emerging themes that started coming out of all of those different public engagement opportunities. Traffic and transportation challenges, future development and growth management, you know, housing options, community identity and placemaking, economic development, parks wreck and open space, and then also government, governance and jurisdictional coordination. So we took those themes, we can go to the next slide. And we started, you know, formulating that vision and goals and even strategies to go along with those topics. So the vision statement that we worked on with the steering committee and there was lots of good. You guys had an excellent steering committee on this. I mean, just super impressive, super conversations that were very respectful, but we talked through a lot of hard things. Even on the vision statement, you know, there was a lot of wordsmithing on this to make sure that we were articulating this well and making sure that it really captured what we wanted to capture in, in the plan itself. So what the steering committee landed on was that the town of Avon is a vibrant, family-friendly town that has a shared commitment to celebrate our quality schools, foster great neighborhoods, and cultivate a healthy economy. We strive to embrace our traditions, support smart land development, and enhance the quality of life through recreation, arts, and culture. Our vision is to create a future filled, filled with possibility, connection, and enduring community spirit. And I think the steering committee was especially excited about that last line about the possibility, connection, and enduring community spirit. Next slide, please. So the document that you have in front of you is a, is a robust document. The general outline for the plan is that there's an executive summary, an introduction, background and context of the community. There's a chapter that talks about the community engagement that I already went over. And then there's an analysis by subject matter. And you can see all the topics that are on the right-hand side of the screen are all of the subject matter chapters. So land use, community identity and placemaking, transportation, housing and neighborhoods, parks and open space, economic development, and then community facilities and infrastructure. In addition to the analysis by subject matter, those subject matter topics, there's also a chapter about the focus areas that we kind of focused in on. And there's four of those, even though I think there were six identified in total in the project. And then finally, there is a chapter that just talks about implementation and, you know, moving forward, how to keep the plan up to date. Next slide, please. So this is actually your existing future land use map. And one of the things that we talked about with the steering committee, there was some, you know, concern that there were areas that are not shown on this map. And that made it somewhat difficult at times for planning staff and the Plan Commission when, you know, different petitions were coming to the table that were considering for land use changes or zoning changes. So one of the primary goals that we had was to really develop a future land use map that looked at all of the areas of Avon, even ones that are already developed that might especially be candidates for redevelopment in the future. Another thing that we talked about as a steering committee was that, you know, there might be areas that we want to look at that go outside of Avon's town limits today. And what would that look like in the future? We also looked at the different classifications. So, you know, currently as it stands today, your classifications are agriculture, specialty housing, town center, area retail, neighborhood retail, innovation, light industrial, and a wellness district. And I think at times those were challenging for staff. You know, what does specialty housing mean? So those definitions weren't super clear. I think this plan absolutely served you guys well for several years. And, you know, when you get to a point where you're saying, okay, I think we've outgrown this, you know, that is the time that you do an update to your comp plan. So if we can switch to the next slide, you can see that this is a, again, much more robust future land use map than what you currently have. And we took into considerations areas that were not in city limits that could be potentially in city limits in the future. And really, we looked at all of Washington Township as well and even outside of Washington Township. And we also adjusted your future land use categories to be more helpful for staff and the Plan Commission. So some of those have been tweaked a little bit. There's still an agriculture classification, a residential, but there's also a mixed use, a commercial office classification, light industrial, institutional, parks and recreation, and then floodplain. Can we please go to the next slide? In your document, you'll see that we did go into giving better descriptions of what these classifications mean. So on each category, you'll see a description that describes what that intent of that land use is. It gives primary uses, secondary uses, and we also dive into any additional notes that might be relevant for that classification. Can we go to the next slide, please? We can kind of flip through, you can keep going slowly through these. Thank you. One thing that makes your plan unique and I think exciting is that your residential area has been defined on a map as just residential. And we have a residential definition, but we do end up focusing in more detail on district guidelines for that residential area. So instead of having areas on a map that say, you know, maybe, we don't like saying high density because that scares a lot of people, but there might be areas in your community that you might want to have different products available. And what we've done is we've outlined some guidelines on when that might be appropriate to have that different type of product besides a single-family residential home. And so there is a section that really takes this deep dive into that that we think, along with planning staff, they think that this will really help them when you guys are considering petitions for rezones or site plans that can help decide if it's really appropriate for Avon or not. Once we get through the land use chapter, that's kind of its unique, a unique chapter, but there are, all of the chapters have goals and objectives and then your action items that go along with it. So when you flip through the document, each chapter, you'll see these goals. And then if we can go to the next slide, please. There's strategies and then action steps that go along with them. So each goal has, you know, a number of strategies and then those action steps. The action steps are the things that help you accomplish the strategies and then ultimately those goals. We've identified an implementation leader for the action steps and then we've also prioritized that. You know, the, if it has three dots, that's a high priority. If it has one dot, it's a low priority. So you can kind of see where the steering committee felt like all of those things fell for the town of Avon. And focus areas. All right, so we had six focus areas, or six areas in total that we identified as part of this project. But we did further development on four of them. So if you look at your, your, or the focus area map, and I'll show you one on the screen in just a minute. We have a Riverwalk District, Greenway District North, a Greenway District South, a Midtown District, a Revitalization District, and then a Live Work District. And for all of these districts, there is a, not all of them, the four that are at the bottom of our list that are highlighted or bolded, there is a overview of what that district, the intent is. There are some design principles that go along with that that have been identified. There's a conceptual plan that can give some guidance on maybe what that will look like on the ground. And then some precedent imagery of just photos of what that, what the steering committee envisioned those districts could look like. Next slide, please. I think this is a really pretty map with the colors. It's one of my favorites in the document. But you can see all the different districts that are highlighted on this. So the Riverwalk District is in that blue color. The Greenway District North is the yellow. Greenway District South is the green. The Midtown District is the orange color. And the Revitalization District is the red. And then the Live Work District, of course, is in purple on the northeast side of the town. Next slide, please. So the Revitalization District area is along US 36. And you can see that, you know, there's some future land uses that have been identified on this focus area as well. And this is a tool then that your planning staff and your Plan Commission, that if they get a petition that is in this particular focus area, they can look at this map and see, get some further guidance on what is appropriate or maybe not appropriate for future development. This one really focused on kind of that US 36 corridor. You know, there's some areas that may be in need of redevelopment in the future. I think this is one of the really neat things about Avon is that you guys are a very young community that inherited a lot of development and growth that happened well before you guys incorporated. So you have this opportunity now, moving forward, on really defining what that character is going to look like for your future. And so that's what we looked at a lot with this, this Revitalization District. Can we go to the next slide, please? You can see some precedent imagery of what this area could potentially look like. Next slide, please. The next one that I'll talk about is that Midtown District. I think formerly, we kind of talked about this being the, what was it?
Gateway.
Gateway. It used to be called the Gateway District. And we had some discussion about that as to whether or not this area was a gateway anymore. And we thought that Midtown might be more appropriate because it is kind of in the middle of town. So that name shifted a little bit as we went through this planning process. But again, you know, some different land uses were identified or we did maybe more of a fine-tooth comb on land uses in this area on what that could look like. This one, I think, is heavily influenced by the Eastern Gray development, just kind of changing what this area looks like for the future. Next slide, please. And some precedent imagery on what could potentially, this could potentially look like. Next slide. And then this one is Greenway District South. One of the concepts that came out of this was really looking at the creek area and how that could develop and be a draw for your future. I think right now, this area, you know, your creek and your trails that go along with it are, there's so much parks and wreck and open space that kind of go along this corridor that really can be tied together even more intentionally in the future. And then how do we incorporate different types of housing into this area while we still conserve some of those open spaces and keep it as an amenity for the town? So that's really what we focused a lot on, on this Greenway District. So when you take a read through that section, that's that, kind of that primary focus of that. Can we go to the next slide? So this would be kind of a mix of having walkable mixed-density neighborhoods, but also having a lot of well-preserved natural areas within that district. You're just fine. I appreciate you driving for me, so even if we, there we go. Last one, Live Work District Area Conception Plan. This one has a lot of focus on the hospital area and how that could be developed in the future. I think this is a really unique and exciting district that we identified. We had a lot of participation from the steering committee on this one. And you can see that there is some areas that are maybe outside of town that was included in this just because we wanted to make sure it felt cohesive and made sense for the future. Let's skip to the next slide. These are obviously some precedent imagery with some community character for this district. We really thought that, you know, having it a place where employees of the hospital could live, work, and play in this area was really important. All right, let's keep going. All right, some final steps on this. So like I said, we're kind of rounding that final phase of the plan, not the plan, the comprehensive planning process. So we did do a public presentation that took place on July 14th. We were saying August. Man, time is going fast. So July 14th was when we did have that public process or public presentation. That was a special meeting of that Plan Commission. And then we made sure that the plan was available on the project website, which was planavon, isplanavon.com. And we did ask for feedback from the Plan Commission and the public by August 1st. We did not receive any feedback by that August 1st deadline. And even after the August 1st deadline, we didn't receive anything. So we did then went to Plan Commission for the public hearing on August 25th. And we did get a favorable recommendation to the town council. It was a six-zero vote. We did not have any remonstrators or any, anyone from the public that spoke up about it. And the Plan Commission had a good discussion and was, I think, very obviously favorable. Had a lot of good things to say about it, which was encouraging and, and good after you go through such a long planning process. So our final steps on this is actually adoption by the town council. So this is just tentatively scheduled for October 11th at your regular town council meeting at 7:00 PM. And with that, I think we are open to talking about it and answering any questions that the town council may have. So thank you.
I think I'd like to talk about where you showed the hospital corridor, what you're referring to as the hospital corridor. We refer to that internally as the Ronald Reagan corridor. And you were showing, if we could put that slide back up, a lot of residential and mixed use there. Avon is very, very, very limited compared to their surrounding neighbor, neighboring towns with the amount of industrial space and land that we have to achieve some type of tax base for that industrial use. And so I do have a concern that you're showing so much residential there. That's taking up a lot of our frontage. And also, at the same time, it is limited access there. So I don't know how residential in that density would work in that area.
Yes, and Linda, we can tag team this too. So a few thoughts on this. And yes, I would say there was a lot of discussion about that with it being the Ronald Reagan and having limited access. So I know the discussions that we had specifically about this, we were looking at where those entry points would this, we were looking at where those entry points would be and what would make sense. Um, there's a neighborhood that is in that long skinny, let's see, is it on Yates? So that's a existing, some of it is existing. I don't have an aerial on it.
So the, the mixed use is what you're talking about. It's not showing-
Yeah, we're not showing anything as residential. We're showing it as mixed use. Is that what you're talking about, Don?
Well, mixed use is res-
The yellow residential piece is Silver Springs, which you guys have already approved.
Right, but mixed use is residential, high-rise typically with some shops in it. So it is residential. Let's not-
There is some residential, and I think that's-
Call it what it is.
I think that is dependent on what type of petitions you get and what the town feels comfortable approving. I think the bigger use of this is going to be medical offices and things that help contribute to the hospital. So-
That it's not medical office zoning. That's not what you're showing for the future there. You're showing mixed use.
And I think if we go back and we would look at the mixed use categories, there is a variety of uses that can be in that, in that district.
Mixed use in this plan does not always mean first floor retail and then apartments above. That's not what we were thinking. We were thinking a mix within the whole development. So there could be some residential here and office buildings here and retail here. It could be a mix.
It could be-
That residential-
Vertical or it could be horizontal too.
Residential is mixing with the commercial that is supportive of the hospital area.
Okay, so I'm looking at your mixed use definition, and it says it's intended to support vibrant districts with a combination of complementary residence, residential, commercial, and institutional uses. Well, we already have the institutional because the hospital's already there. That leaves us with, um, residential, commercial, which is what I've said when I started this conversation. And then it says, "Primary uses: restaurant, retail, hotel, entertainment, professional office, professional services, townhomes, apartments, and condominiums." So tell me how that brings a 3% tax base.
And I think when petitions are coming in, if it's not hitting what you want it to hit, if it's too much residential, if you feel it's too much, like if the council is thinking it's too much residential that's being proposed for that district, that's where you get that opportunity to scale it back or say, no, that's not what we want.
But when developers look to the town of Avon for land to purchase or to consider, they're looking at this future land use map and trying to see if what they're, what is fits. And if we're showing mixed use, that's not industrial.
And I don't, I guess my understanding when we were working through this as the steering committee was not necessarily that, that orange area on the map would be industrial. The purple is industrial on the map currently. And so how do we contribute to the vitality and the vibrancy of the hospital area to attract hospital employees that want to live and work in that district? And I, and I guess that goes back to the namesake of the district, that it's the Live/Work District Area Conceptual Plan. And so I think if, if that's not the intent that the town would want in that district, I think we would, we would need to rethink it and maybe come up with a, a new name. Um-
I'm, I'm one of five, obviously, but, um, maybe other people's opinions have changed, but we've always thought of that corridor in the past as our industrial area and our industrial opportunity. So I'll just be quiet now and let others speak.
Well, this was discussed heavily at the steering committee, and the steering committee was very clear in trying to, or wanting to promote the hospital area and then land available around the hospital to support it and make it thrive and have places for hospital employees to be able to live within the town. And that's the direction it took, and this is where the steering committee landed. We did talk about industrial on this quarter.
A five-story apartment building is going to pay a decent-sized apartment building. Pay just as much tax as industrial.
We did have, um, a member of, was it this, I can't remember his title. What was that?
Barren Reserve.
The owner.
From Mindo.
Yes, yes. Came and spoke to the steering committee and talked about the model that they're using in Indy of having residential that's kind of paired up with the hospital district on there, that it's a live-work space. That is something that they use as a, a tool to attract the best and brightest of doctors. Um, so I think that's something to consider with this district as well.
So do we have a formula to use? At what point do we, the council, say, no more residential?
And I think that's a tough one. Um, I don't know if there's a, you know, a comprehensive plan is a guidance document. It is one that you guys can use as a tool, but I wouldn't say that a comprehensive plan has a formula in it for decision-making, unfortunately.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, if this is industrial, commercial, we have avenues to change to residential should we want to.
Yeah, so just a quick reminder, comprehensive plan is a guidance document. The land use plan is a guidance document. The zoning is what actually controls the use of the property. So you need to make sure we don't confuse those two things.
Well, I'm not confused. I'm worried about people coming in, being confused by looking at our comprehensive plan.
You mean by developers? Does that make sense? Well, that's why I think we try to make it more clear. So like, Don, I'm not sure where you read that definition from. When I'm reading this page of the Live/Work District-
Page 43.
It clearly says, "Develop walkable mixed-use activity center along Ronald Reagan Parkway, neighboring employment sites, including industrial development, medical offices, professional offices, and ID held West Hospital." And so it's talking about, it's, it's saying that it may be a combination of all of those things. You remember, we talked a lot about this area, particularly the orange, at the steering committee about that we wanted a transformational project for this area. We didn't necessarily want to put two type of guidelines on what a transformational project looked like. We wanted to challenge developers to come up with a really creative, unique idea, again, with what you said, that we want, if it's just, here's an average apartments, that's not a transformational project. You don't want that. It's not what we're looking for. So I think we've captured those things that you're concerned about. But again, this plan is giving that guidance, but ultimately, to your point, Bill, you as the town council will still decide if that project is a transformational project and if it meets what you want. If it's not, you still deny the zoning. This isn't telling them that they get to do whatever they want to do, or that we're going to approve apartments.
I understand that. This is a guiding tool for them to come in and use.
I read it off page 45, mixed use.
I think, you know, as being a member of the steering committee, as, as you were, and I don't think we've had that conversation that you just brought up. We had conversations, but I don't think it was, I don't want to say negative to what you've just said. We tried to look at the hospital, they're there. The hospital owns the land, the Yates are up to it and across. How can we benefit the hospital? Because they've, I've met with them, and they've got facilities, like, um, physical therapist facilities that want to come here, but they don't have the facility. So they want to build office. From an assessed value standpoint, office space will give us what we're looking for. Yeah, I don't think, I learned a long time ago, you can't compare residential to commercial until you look at the assessed value, and apartments may create more assessed value than industrial building. So that's what we looked at. We also invited the owner of the land who controls it, you know, to get their input. So I think what we have here, we're, we're trying to take something. I mean, right there at 100 North and Ronald Reagan, I'm not sure you can get any commercial in that parcel there. So we're trying to work with existing business in our community to help them expand because they need help trying to bring in talent at the living wage that they offer. And so we're trying to create a win-win here and make it, as Ryan said, a transformational development.
Yeah, that's what I am, Don. I would, I would use page 154. I know some, we have to be careful too hard not to get overly focused on ours, because I know, like, on the future land use map, it has the orange. But this area in particular, we have a separate description of what our intent is. So to Bill's point, we are trying to give somebody who looks at this map or looks at our plan to see what we're doing, we've given specific guidance about what we want to see in that area. And I would say this guidance, that other one is a general description of mixed use. This is of what we want to see in that mixed use area. And that's, I would say again, this is better guidance than that other piece. And this is specific to that area. So I think we are providing developers a better guidance of what we actually want for that area. And again, I think that's what we need here then.
If the hospital loves housing, but their people just go from the hospital, is that taxable? Is there a problem?
Yeah, it's going to be taxable, probably. It's not.
Okay.
Yeah, it's going to be taxable. I think, I think one thing to keep in mind, I would say, when you guys consider a comprehensive plan, is, is I don't want you to feel blocked in by a comprehensive plan. When I do training, I say this, I'll say it again, the only people who decide what zoning in development looks like in the town is you. The ordinances, your zoning ordinance, your subject control ordinance, your UDO, reason of decision-making, that's all you. Plan commission makes recommendations. Comp plan is a vision, a vision, in that it doesn't block you in. Each case that you have, the court say, you, it's legislated by the discretion, can use the five factors. There are plenty of cases, there are plenty of cases, where they say, well, yeah, the comp plan said this was allowed, and they said, no, that must mean they violated the law. Every case says, no, they don't follow the comp plan. Comp plan's a vision, not law. You know, case, and case, and case, we talked about the fact, that case, or if decided in your training documents, that case citation. Every case after that said that. So you, you know, in your discussion, you can do whatever, but every, every time we do the comp plan, I think the council feels a little like, are they, it might not be trapped in the stock, and it's going to be using the S. It may, but you know that, you guys know that, every reasonable case, it could be decided by you, decided by you, you can use five tax factor factors, only one of which is the comp plan. And you may say, yeah, you know, comp plan says mixed use, this thing with, you know, office and then four floors of apartments. That's, I guess that's mixed use, but you know what? Number five, category five is, is it responsible for the development? We don't think it is. We don't think that's, that's what we need here. And that, that decision, your decision, will be held up every time, at court, if you have that, if that's your basis. That's what I hear you guys talking about a little bit. I just want to be in your voice and hear, say, be confident, you have all the power, because I'm the southern law, you do.
My biggest issue is balancing tax revenue. That's it.
And it's responsible for the development. That fifth factor is right there, right? Talking about two, yeah.
That's for me. At what point, at what point does a residential development come to us that either, that either equals to or is greater than commercial or industrial? That has one, again, as, as Don said, has one vote. That's, that's all I'm going to be looking for, quite frankly. And I hope I'm not pigeonholing myself, but that, that's what my concern is. I think we've got enough one percenters.
I would think if you approached it that way, your assessed value for strictly residential would be less than commercial and industrial, depending upon the development.
The last set.
But we don't have all that, so each, right. Each developer's going to interpret this the way they want to interpret it.
I apologize for not, not knowing the restrictions, but I don't, I don't know what our height restriction is in that area. If we've, if we've approved, uh, some kind of variance, I think we probably have for the hospital, but housing, you're only going to go up so far without a variance.
So hospital three.
Uh, I believe it just went to four. I think it just went to the fourth story, and I think it could go to a fifth.
Five.
I believe it could go five. So that's a great point, Bill. So remember, this is the start. So the concept is then more will come after this. So like, we talk about the budget, we put money in, we've established these districts. The next, next step would be to create overlay districts for these specific things, where then we would create specific criteria that we want to see. So we're starting to get down into the weeds. This comp plan is up here. We're going to get into the weeds. This comp plan's not going to do it, but we'll get there. But the comp plan ends up with God. So then, Linda will be asked with, now we'll create an overlay district, which is what we did on 36, when the council said, we want to have specific criteria, we want it to be nicer, we want to do this, we want to do that. Now we'll take this and we will create an overlay district for what we want to see in that area, which will get into the weeds and say, well, maybe we will. In this area, we'll allow five stories. We may not want that over here on Avon Avenue, but we'd be okay with it in this district. And then we're giving those developers the information they need about what we really want.
I'm not trying to persuade anybody. I'm just giving a position statement. So.
Well, I would hope that when those overlay districts are developed this time, that people stick to them, because our overlay district on Rockville Road says, no drive-throughs.
It doesn't, it's, it allows them by special exception. It doesn't say no drive-throughs. And special exceptions are permitted uses. They're just permitted by special exception.
And so, we've actually talked about this, and we laughed about it. So this is one thing, like, when we talk about things, that's what, there was this big conversation about that we were going to prohibit drive-throughs on 36. Well, when we passed the overlay district, that's not really what we did. We just said, I think originally we had it in there, but then people said, whoa, 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 wait a minute, what about this situation? What about that situation? And so we said, okay, well, if you're concerned about that, let's take that out and allow it by special exception. Well, a special exception, if they need that criteria, then they can do it. So I think that was a, in our minds, we had a vision, but we didn't actually put the policy in place to make sure that that vision came about.
Right. So what I'm saying is, make sure your vision comes about this time.
Agreed.
Because we have an opportunity to get it right this time. Anyone else?
I know that we are going to share this document with, we'll say, NDOT, especially 36 and our transportation. And we have no jurisdiction over 36. All we can do is provide them our thoughts, our concerns, our reservations. And we know that they are currently expanding, widening, um, 36 Rockville Road. But hopefully, this will be a document, they'll, they'll listen to us and say, hey, we get it. Maybe there's something else we can do. But not only them.
I'm bringing that up because there is something in here as a recommendation that I think is, we talked about in the steering committee, that I want the other three of you to hear out loud. There was some discussion about, there's two things in Avon that are very divisive to our community. Number one is US 36, number two is CSH development. So we've, in the steering committee, there were lots of discussion about how people don't like that the town hasn't had control of US 36. So there's actually a statement in here, right, Paul, that says the town should have discussion with NDOT about how we control our future. And is there a good reason to talk to NDOT about the division 36? So that this town would actually have control over 36, that would allow us to have more control over what that quarter looks like. That's super scary. I'm not telling you guys this to scare you off. I want you to know it's in the plan, which is why I'm telling you. But if ultimately the town wants to have more control of that quarter, that may be a realistic thing. Now, we don't even know that NDOT will even have a discussion with this. I'm not telling you I want to snowplow it. I'm not telling you I want to pave it. I'm just telling you from a planning perspective, it may be something at some point in the future, maybe none of the 25 of us sitting here today will do it, and maybe it'll happen 50 years from now. But it, it does mention that in here, so I want you guys to be aware of that.
Well, it's just like they relinquished 267. Well, it's just like they relinquished 267 to the different municipalities along their route. We could certainly ask them to relinquish from Raceway Road to whatever our western boundary is going to be. But then I, my fear is, they'll do the way, what they want to do it in Marion County, they'll jump over us, and then they'll continue on their way doing it the way they want to do it in the Danville.
You had a grievance on Avon Avenue.
Right.
Until 465 to Raceway is done that way, good luck.
But didn't you just send out?
Yeah, that's what I just told you guys, that's two years, that's going to be known. So that may be some discussion that we want to have with NDOT before they go spend another $100 million on 36. That may be money that NDOT will relinquish to us, and so I'm going to prepare it. Again, I know this will be scary to some people, but Keystone Avenue, that's, Carmel decided they wanted to control their own fate, they wanted it to look like they've looked. I'm not saying 36 is Keystone Avenue is not because it's a strong retail corridor. Keystone didn't necessarily have a lot of retail in it, more residential in it. So not saying it is the same as that, but that was a risk Carmel took to say, we want to control our fate, we want to say what it's going to look like through our community. NDOT gave them $120 million when they relinquished it. Now again, does $120 million, does that get us what we need? You know, what are the other things we want? And at some point, someone may just make, have to make a decision, is that, is doing something like that worth our ability to control it, or are we willing to leave our faith to NDOT on how that corridor ultimately looks for the next 50 years?
And didn't you say in your weekly update that they're wanting it to be six-lane all the way out?
They are, yes. And that's what.
And then come to a screeching halt in Danville?
Well, they don't want 36 to go through Danville at all. They're trying to get 36 to be rerouted around Danville, and so, yeah, that's, it's a little bit crazy, but that's what, I mean, we want that midtown district, I want to be able to share that with NDOT, as our evidence of, we do not want six-lane sections through here, we're trying to create a more walkable area in this area, and we don't want six-lanes. Your six-lanes is divisive to that. But if I don't have any planning to support it, NDOT's just going to say, yeah, thanks, here's your six-lanes, and they're going to steamroll us. So there are things in here that we strategically put in to advocate for things that we as staff members, you guys as town councils, members say that you want.
From a planning point of view, 36 is probably the most difficult thing we have to deal with, just looking at what, what does this site look like? Oh, it's on 36, it's NDOT. It's hard for us to even get to a point of talking to a developer when we got to bring NDOT in, and they're going to do whatever they want. It's, it's one of the most difficult planning tasks I've been asked to do in my whole career. It's just difficult, because it's so big and so massive, and we don't control it. So even if we don't go down that route, we at least want to show NDOT with this plan, look, midtown, this is where we're going to insert ourselves into this planning process.
Yeah, I think it's a tool that you can use to articulate what your vision is, and because it's a, a document that has public engagement, has, once we get adoption, you know, that it has council support, that it can be a tool that you can use to collaborate and have a partnership with NDOT. I've seen in other communities where, you know, there is a state-controlled facility, but the town gets awarded funding for an LPA project that can then kind of work in tandem with an upgrade that the state is doing, so that they can put on their, you know, icing on the cake, or, you know, have some influence in that project. And I, you know, I just think that's a wonderful tool that you guys will be able to have. And I think there's a lot of language, and Paul did a really great job of really zeroing in on the US 36 language that's in there to make sure that it was going to be a usable tool for your future.
The only other section that I want to bring up personally, just so it's on the record, is that southwest corridor. I've said it until ad nauseam in the steering committees, but, you know, that new school's out there, we knocked on doors, there's three sitting council people here who knocked on doors, along and partnered with our township board members at the time, our library board members, school board members, township board, I mean, all of us went out there as a unified front, knocked on doors to get that annex, that annexation done, to put that wall there to keep Danville from continuing to encroach across the township line. And we told those people at the time, you sign our permit, our petition, as long as we're sitting here, it's going to be agriculture and estate. And this document, again, and I hear Dan, that we have the final say-so, but I don't want those people to think we didn't hear them, I heard them loud and clear, and I still have that same vision for out there, and I don't even like seeing residential color on that area. Yes.
I know, Dawn, and we, this was a tough conversation that we had as a steering committee, and there was a lot of discussion around this topic. And again, I think the steering committee that we had at the table was really respectful in hearing all sides of this viewpoint, and, you know, I think the ag district, we, I think we originally started with, we were not going to have the ag district anymore in general, and then we did step that back because we thought that that wasn't a good planning practice for the future, that if we were saying all residential, that that could end up in lots, that would be chopping up areas for future development, and just trying to be really mindful of what that would look like for the future. The two areas that are on that future land use map, if you guys have your document in front of you, if you can flip to page 43, because this can help, help you follow along what I'm going to talk about. But there are two areas that are, are ag, that were left designated as ag. There's not utilities that go out to those areas. And those were the ones that I think we had originally talked about as a steering committee as, as transitioning to a residential future land use, but then stepped it back because we thought that just, or the group thought it wasn't good planning practice. And Dawn, I know specifically the area that you're talking about, you know, a lot of that discussion at the steering committee sessions was that, that landscape has changed a little bit with the introduction of that school in that area too. You know, and I think looking at the future, maybe right now is not the, the time that we would want that, or the town would want that to transition into anything else besides what it is. However, with the school now being there, you know, having residential near adjacent to a school could be very appropriate from a planning perspective. But I do understand, you know, the position that you are in, and the promises that you made, and I think you still have the opportunity with this plan to really, to be solid with that and say, yeah, maybe long-term, at some point in the far future, this could be residential. However, right now, it's not okay to be that.
I just wanted it on the record.
Yes, understood, thank you.
Rachel, can you explain, because we talked about a lot of the steering committee about the challenges of designating that area just solely in the water. Can you share that briefly?
Yeah, from, what we worry about in areas that are more rural or agriculture right now is that we have a five lot, or five-acre minimum lot, and areas that would ideally be great for future subdivisions, once utilities get to that spot, they start chopping up in five-acre pieces and doing a septic on them. And then you have land that essentially is developed, the sprawl just goes out, and there's the, the compact subdivisions that connect to each other and create communities is lost because we stepped too far too soon and allowed the farmland to be chopped up into five-acre lots essentially. So we wanted, that's why we went back to agriculture, to say, this is agriculture, no big lots, this is preserved until the utilities get there. And then, when the utilities get there, that's when we will consider residential. And that's what it says for the area around the school as well as the agriculture.
Linda, our goal would be, it's not that we don't want five-acre lots.
Correct.
It's that if we don't want five-acre lots that all want driveways to the county road, we want a subdivision that has five-acre lots. That it has more dense infrastructure versus them trying to use the county road as infrastructure. Then it's.
But yeah, absolutely. We're not saying no at five-acre lots. I mean, if you want a five-acre lot, there'll, there'll be a space for you to do it. We just don't want a farmer to take their land and to make 20 lots out of it, when 20, 40 years from now, it would be ideal for a nice subdivision with a park and a school next to it. We've just kind of wasted that land on such big lots.
See, and I look at it completely differently. I look at, our community should have a variety for people that want different uses. Some people want horses, you know, Carmel has horses, but they have a lot of mixed use too, and they're in different areas, but they, if somebody wants a horse, we're going to say, we don't want you in Avon, because we think it's a waste to have five-acre lots. I don't think that's the message that I want to send. And I just think that we have a lot of single-family residential area acreage-wise in this town. We have a lot of paired homes, we have a lot of apartments. We're now talking mixed use, more mixed use. What's wrong with having a section of our property, or of our town, that is geared more towards agriculture and people that want larger lots? And I think if we're going to do it, further west is the thing. We're not saying, under redevelopment, let's do it at where target is. You know, I think the right place for it is out west, and we get one shot at this.
And I would say that the residential land use gives that flexibility still of the acreage or the size lot that it would be. I, I don't think that there is a, it's not saying that that area around the school has to be anything in particular at this point. There's some guidance, again, there's the guidance that can give you some, I'm stumbling over my words, give you guidance on it, but that's what it would be.
And if it doesn't mean anything, then I would like to propose that color be agriculture, if it doesn't mean anything.
I, I think the purpose was that, or what Linda was trying to say was that it would be developed in a way that would not be a burden on that county road infrastructure, that it could be more planned, and, yes.
I understand what she's saying.
But if it's in the, if it is an agriculture district, and it's, that gives it more risk to be, to happen, for that development to happen that way. Does that make sense?
Linda, where are you and Paul at in revisiting our existing ordinances now, so we tie back into this comp plan?
We are on our second to last chapter of internal review, before you will see our draft of the changes, and there are a lot, a lot of changes. A few policy changes, mostly edits areas that contradict each other, that we've had difficulty implementing, areas that don't meet, you know, practice standards, like we had a very low standard for lighting on ball fields, so we had to grant a variance for the, for the tennis courts for the school. So things like that, more technical stuff, not policy changes so much yet, that'll be coming after this is adopted. But if there's anything in there specifically you're, you're interested in, we could, we could look at it now.
Any other questions or discussion on the comp plan?
My last comment is, my concern was some of these zoning loopholes that we have out there currently, do you feel like we've addressed those?
The zoning loophole that was.
Even though I know it's a land use map, it's not a zoning map, I get it.
Good job, Greg.
The zoning loophole that we closed for the R2, and also correcting the zoning map from the error that went out online, I think we've closed the loopholes that we were worried about. And we've made a few tweaks in the ordinance changes we're going to be bringing to you on the residential sections, but nothing major until this gets adopted. But I don't think the loopholes that we were worried about about a year ago are a loophole anymore since we've made that change.
Thank you.
I would close, just unless there's other questions. Our plan, we know this is a lot of information that you guys just got time for the first time. So we need you guys to look at this, and if there's things you want us to change, please let us know before October 11th, because that's when we're tentatively going to bring it. And somebody corrected what we're wrong, what have we changed?
I'll, I'll touch on that. The Plan Commission has approved the document as you have it now. The way state statute reads is, if you want to make changes, you are permitted to, if you pass a resolution, not an ordinance, but it's, yeah, a resolution proposing changes, and you outline specifically what those changes are. And then it gets sent back to the Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission will vote on whether or not they accept those changes. If they do, then the plan is considered adopted. If they don't, then it would come back to you, and you would have to pass a second resolution to basically make the changes occur without the Plan Commission recommendation. Right, Dan?
So I ask that to be serious, because.
Good job.
Don't wait until October 11th to tell us you don't like something. If you don't like something, let us know that, so that we can try to get it fixed, or get a resolution to say, this is what you want to change, so that we can do it. So again, we need you guys to look at it, and if you insist or want a change, please let us know.
I will need some information.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. Okay, meeting adjourned.
We'll call the Yavon Town Council meeting September 11th to order. If everyone could still, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathy, would you take a roll call, please?
Robert Pope.
Present.
Bill Holland.
Present.
Greg Zuzen.
Present.
Don Loudon.
Present.
Jason Puckett.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum, so we'll continue with the consent agendas first on the order tonight. Any questions, discussion, and if not, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, including the check register for September 11th, the August 28th, 2025 work session, and Miranda, and approval of minutes from the August 28th meeting as well.
Second.
Thank you, Kathy.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Bill Holland.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Next on the agenda is a public comment session. The public may comment on items on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing or on a specific manner within the county's jurisdiction. Like to come forward, please state your name and address. No one in the public coming forward, so we will go ahead and close that at 7:01 PM and move forward with department updates.
John Taylor, Economic Development Director. I guess I have no voice tonight for some reason. Right now, we've got five really good projects. Some of them have already been completed. The company's coming to town. KSI Automotive is taking 150,000 square feet of the Yavon Landing 300,000 square foot building. Lakeside Books will be taking 700,000 square feet of the Chicago Industrial Million Square Foot Building down on 100 South. They'll start with 140 full-time and 250 part-time and up there full-time by 100 in the following year. Abbott Labs is coming to town. They're going to take 250,000 square feet of the buildings across from Rise. The smaller the building, it's 310. We're going to take 250 of that. And then the other two projects that we're working on is the Million F Square Foot Building. That's Project Health with 1,000 jobs. And then the other one is a... They can't throw things at me, can they? A 40,000 square foot data center. I know that's, those are dirty words, but what I'll have to say about a small data center, it doesn't have to drain on resources like a million square foot data center has, but still going to have a ton of personal property, taxable personal property. But this company may only have 25 jobs, but they'll also be probably jobs 80, $120,000 a year. So when, if we get the opportunity to bring that to you, please don't think about what's happened in Pittsburgh, what's happened south side of Indianapolis with these million square foot buildings that are, you know, taking up all the water and taking all the electricity. That's not what's going to happen here. We've already spoken with our utilities to make sure that this could come here, and it could. So we'll see what happens. Any questions?
Okay, thanks.
Steve Moore, Public Works Director. Guess the big thing is the roundabout construction in 900, just north of 36. That's going really well. Utilities are all relocated except for one power pole that's in our way that we're going to be able to work around, and one utility vault that's in our way that we're able to work around. So we're going like gangbusters out there. I'm really happy with the progress. So all good news out there so far. Raceway, still going slow. We've got one utility done with their relocation. CenterPoint's got their stuff done. We have, AT&amp;T's got their permit, and they have nominal work to do anyway. We're being held up by one company that's waiting for money to come up. Their fiscal year is October, so they're waiting to start then. That's Citizens Water and Gas. So they're going to be starting in October. And then another one that AES or AEP, they're holding us up blaming a property owner who is blaming them. So I don't know. Anyway, we're making progress, and that's not as much as what I wish for. And again, that's not going to start until next year anyhow. Dan Jones III, we're about ready to take that out to bid probably on October, right? Yeah. And then Dan Jones IV, still under design. We're about probably out 40%. Stormwater utility, we're still waiting on one utility to relocate for the Pines project. Report-wise, potholes. Keaton and Eli used about 31 bags this last month, cold patch. Didn't have to bring in a contractor at all. Missed four inspections, Drew and Eli. They completed 99 inspections last month. There were no fines. Betsy collected a little over $3,600 in permit fees for 10 permits. And she also got $106 in signed restitution because I'm an October sign. Keaton and Eli performed 28 right-of-way inspections. Eli installed 19 signs, including four new radar speed signs for the two new speed tables. The one on 900, south of 200, for the new park entrance. Those two are installed. And they just installed the two on 625 here, just north of 36, for the trail crossing there. So got more speed signs up. Any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Linda Albrand, Planning Director. Paul and I have seen a substantial uptick in the number of inquiries, phone calls, requests for information about different properties around town. So we, we think there's a lot going on. We think we're going to probably see a few more petitions coming up. So just want to let you know that there's more activity going on right now. We've had some, including a request to reuse the Joanne Building, so that's positive. Whispering Pines South began moving dirt this week. Wawa has a pre-con scheduled for next week, so they'll be moving soon. The August Plan Commission, we had the comp plan recommended for approval. We had a discussion on the rules of procedure changes, which haven't come yet. It was just a discussion. Plan Commission coming up on the 22nd will be Ray Skillman Mazda. They've reduced their building size by 10,000 square feet and made some substantial architectural changes that the Plan Commission wanted. So we think it'll proceed forward on the 22nd. The BZA, at the August meeting, there was a daycare approved. There was a petition for Seven Brew at Shiloh Crossing. They ended up withdrawing because of some design changes they wanted to do, but they plan on coming back. It was not walking away from it, but in the future, they just needed more time. The BZA coming up in September, if you remember, we've had Dutch Brothers Coffee lingering for quite some time in front of the Lowes. They've chosen to withdraw because, or they're proposing to withdraw because Lowes will simply not hold up or meet their commitment that they made 20 years ago in connecting a drive to Vista Parkway. So that looks like it's likely going to be a zoning enforcement issue from us and not, and we will not see Dutch Brothers in that location. And then also, the BZA on the 23rd will be a fence for Village Place Townhomes. The Advance Auto in front of what was Red Curb, now is a karate place, is wanting an expansion within the existing building. And then the Harlem Bakery is coming with an expansion. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Good evening, Council. Shelby Pride, Parks and Recreation Director. My biggest updates Ryan shared with you guys in his weekly update. If you guys have any questions about any of that, my phone's always on and door's always open. But I do want to publicly thank Steve Moore for the wonderful work he has done for my parks and trails. The speed tables are the perfect entrances and what we needed. One, for Wynton Meadows. It just leads right into that entrance. And then to continue to connect the trail between Town Hall Park and the Summerlot property. So thanks, Steve, even though he walked out. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be presenting last month's report at the next meeting just due to some busyness this week at the police department. We'll have it prepared then.
Thank you. Okay, next is council comment and liaison reports. Bill, we'll start on your end. Greg?
I just want to thank, I want to thank Ryan for his Employee Appreciation Week. I thought you did a great job. It was well received by everybody. But I do think we need to break up that cornhole dominating team of Stobol and Davy, but we'll wait till next year. And then as today is 9/11, the remembrance of what happened in New York City is the university. Continue to pray not only for our country, but for our community and the first responders. And as they said, never forget, all I have.
Jason?
Nothing new for me tonight.
Robert?
Stormwater Board adopted their policy for issuing liens on properties under delinquent on payments. It's going to take, what, almost two quarters for us to actually realize anything, but they've at least got the policy in place now. And nothing in particular for us from the school board. That's all I got.
Okay. Moving on, new business. Introduction of the 2026 non-general fund budget. Ryan?
Yes, everyone's favorite topic, the budget. So at your last meeting, I presented the general fund budget. So just as a quick reminder, it is, the general fund budget's attached in your, under the next agenda item for your general discussion, if you guys want to talk about that at all. I did want to report, we finally actually got our certified assessed value, actually just yesterday. So Financial Solutions Group emailed me that, and it was great news. It's $2,292,742,565, which I know means absolutely nothing to you, but that's an increase of 5.19%. So you remember in Greg's presentation, we had made some assumptions of a reduction in assessed value. And so we not only did not have a reduced assessed value, we did have assessed value growth. So that's fantastic. And you guys will recall that I had said, I feel like we were being overly conservative in that, but 5.19% is excellent. It's not as great as our 14% last year, but I'm guessing that 9% was a result of something like Senate Enrolled Act I that has just led to a reduction in assessed value. So again, super positive and great for the town's budget moving forward. Tonight, however, though, I'm talking about the non-general fund. So for anyone watching publicly, these are funds. Our general fund is funded by property taxes and income taxes. The non-general fund are other revenue sources. Most of these revenue sources have particular uses that they have to be used for. So as I kind of do a quick presentation here, I'll summarize those as we move forward. I'm going to start with the Parks and Recreation Funds. And since Shelby's staying here, she's probably here to listen to make sure I don't mess anything up. But again, I'm going to run you guys through, I'm not going to reiterate everything in each of these budgets. I'm going to highlight some of the changes or the things that I think were important in each of the budgets. You guys have all the Form Ones, and you have all the data to support this information as well. So I'm going to start with parks, food and beverage. So again, for the public watching, food and beverage is a sales tax. It's a 1% sales tax that when people eat in restaurants in Yavon, they pay a 1% sales tax. In Yavon, there are several different food and beverage taxes, but in Yavon, we have to use ours for only parks or utilities. There are some entities that have a food and beverage tax that allows them to use it for anything they want. Ours is not that way. Ours, the legislation that created ours, says we have to use it for parks. You guys know we have a stormwater utility fee, so that pays for our stormwater. We do not have water and sewer, so we use all of our food and beverage for parks funding. Our Parks Department, I mentioned this during the general fund presentation, our Parks Department is now 100% funded out of food and beverage in these other funds. There is no general fund dollars going towards parks and recreation. So just a quick summary, we've talked about this before, but and actually in October, you guys will probably see a proposal for us to move forward with the preliminary design for the White Lake Creek Bridge in Summerlot Park. So just as a reminder, Summerlot Park is right here. The bridge over the creek would be the connection between the Town Hall Park and Easton Gray. So as that TIF is starting to come online, it will generate some revenue to eventually pay for the construction of that project, but we want to get the design going. It may take us four or five years to get through all the environmental that we need to do. So there's some funding for that. Again, it'll take us four years, so it's not fully funded in next year's budget, but a portion of it has been funded in next year's budget. We continue to invest in trail and sidewalk design. We are replacing an RTV with a snowplow. We try to keep our equipment in good shape. It's part of our efforts to make sure our equipment is in good shape. I did want to mention, you guys are all aware that we make payments to the YMCA. Our agreement with the YMCA actually ends in 2026, so that did actually give us some additional revenue in 2026. It ends halfway through. I believe it's in May. So I think we were paying them $133,000 a year, and I think this year we're paying them $55,000? Or 2026, we'll pay $55,000. So that did give us some extra money. And again, when we talked about the food and beverage bond that we did to build the parks, we knew that was rolling off, which allowed us to then make bond payments to develop our parks. So just wanted to remind you guys of that. And then there is some funding in here for parks, capital improvements for Wynton Meadows Park. Again, some of Wynton Meadows Park will be paid for out of the park bonds, but we do have a little bit of money in here as well. The next fund is what we commonly refer to as RIF, which is the Recreation Impact Fee. Again, this is, the RIF can only be used for four things. It can be used for building trails, buying parkland, pickleball courts, a shelter, actually five things, and a playground. So we can only use the money that we generate from RIF to fund those five things. And that's what our Recreation Impact Fee study identified. And that's every time someone pulls a residential building permit, they pay about $1,300 that goes into that RIF, which allows us to provide those amenities for future needs. So next year, we're doing some continued trail design. We also doing some trail construction. I think I just updated you guys in my weekly report that we finally got one of the parcels we needed that we were waiting that was in condemnation. And so we've kind of finally resolved that piece, and that was for a connection from the White Lake Creek to Murphy Aquatic Park. So we're planning to complete that design and then bid it next year. So we're going to have a couple of construction, as well as we already bought the right-of-way from Dan Jones Road to the high school, but there's no trail connection there. So we're going to build that next year too, on the south side of 150. So if you can imagine it, the high school has a connection at Dead Ends, and there's about four houses there. We had to buy right-of-way from those four houses. When we did the Dan Jones Phase Two project, we built the trail, and it stopped where that project ended. project ended, so there was a little gap there. So we're going to fill that gap, which would, it's going to, it'll be a huge connection to the high school and to the rest of the south side of town. There's also some funding for pickleball courts in there. As you guys are aware, we are working with the school corporation to donate the old tennis courts on Avon Avenue in front of, I know it's not intermediate east anymore, it's Evergreen. Thank you, I knew it was an E, but still getting used to that, sorry. And so we are planning to do construction of those pickleball courts, bidding them later this year, but with the construction occurring next year. So there's some funding in there for that as well. The next one is the Parks Recreation Fund. As a reminder, this is our youth sports, Avon Youth Sports, the funding that they generate. And so again, not a lot in that, it's mostly operational stuff. However, they did request this year to move their part-time administrative assistant to full-time, and we were able to accommodate that in their budget. The rest of it's mostly just kind of ongoing operation stuff. There is a little bit of funding for grounds and facility capital improvements. Briefly on public safety lit, so again, we have an income tax that is specifically, has to be used for the police department. That income tax will be used this year to maintain payroll for one officer and our intelligence analyst. It provides equipment for our emergency response team or SWAT, provides funding for advanced investigative needs and services, and pays for police department training. In our TIF districts, the next one, again, TIFs are Tax Increment Finance District. So most of these are along US 36 and along Ronald Reagan Parkway. Again, we talked about this a lot, that we wouldn't be able to fund many projects if it wasn't for TIF. However, over the last couple of years, we have spent down some of our TIF fund balance, so it is starting to tighten up a little bit. But we have some funding in there for Dan Jones Widening Phase Three Construction. We have funding in there for improvements at 525 in US 36 and 525 in East Main Street. We have funding for paving in the TIF district, Dan Jones Bridge Widening, which the county is currently doing. And then we have some funding in there to begin the conceptual design of the police substation and public works facility that we're considering building behind, back by the salt barn off Gable Drive. We have shared the TIF budget with the redevelopment commission. They'll actually review it at their meeting a week, or actually it's Monday, so whatever next Monday is, they'll recommend hopefully approval of those to you guys. We hadn't received any comment from them yet, so we believe that'll probably happen. The next fund is Cumulative Capital Development Fund. This is a main funder of street maintenance. CCD is, you guys have a tax rate, so we have a 5 cent tax rate, and it has to be used for capital projects. And so we use ours to fund street maintenance, we use it to fund our town vehicle replacement program, and we use it to fund the purchase of six police vehicles and lighting and upfitting for those vehicles. And then this year, we did increase, we've been building up our fund balance in that fund. So this year, because of the size of the Dan Jones III project, we're actually proposing $600,000 in one-time funding to support that Dan Jones Widening Phase Three, and that's to reduce some of the pressure on the TIF district. The TIF district then doesn't have as much that they have to pay out of that fund. You'll hear me share that on a couple of funds. We've actually proposed about $1 million from other funds to help support that Dan Jones III project. Public Works actually has quite a few funds. MVH is the main fund. The current wheel tax that we get from the county wheel tax that's passed goes into our MVH fund as well. I'll talk a little bit about our own wheel tax that the town council passed at their last meeting. Then we also have LRS, we have CCI, a couple other funds that go into Public Works. But we have increased funding for Maintenance Improvement Plan, which is our road maintenance. Again, I'm not going to go through it, but if you look at your council packets, the maintenance trends, you can see that in the maintenance trends. We've increased the amount of spending. We had heard from the council that you want us at a minimum to be able to match the CCMG grant. Last year, we were not able to do that. In this year's budget, based on what we've budgeted, we will be able to have enough money that we can actually match and exceed what we actually have to do. So we're going to continue to invest in our infrastructure. Again, there is some one-time funding for Dan Jones Widening Phase Three in here. We continue to do our ADA sidewalk and curb ramps. Steve is working on a safety improvement project at Avon Village Parkway, and it's an unnamed road, but it's the one by Walmart. So if you're familiar with the intersection where Walmart Road is on one side, and then I think it's Eden Gate is on the other side, they're both private streets, that intersection has been popping up on our radar for accidents and that it's unsafe. So Steve's working on trying to do something in that vicinity. I think he's talked about a traffic circle, or he's looked at a mini roundabout, or some different design options that would maybe not be super expensive. It's kind of an odd intersection that it's not necessarily super busy, but it does have kind of cross-traffic coming from all directions. So Steve's looking at that option, and so there's a little bit of funding in there to do some construction there. And then Steve's been working really hard to do some emergency preemptions and signal safety enhancements as well. So that's the Public Works. As I mentioned earlier, the next one would be wheel tax, and this is the municipal wheel tax that the council passed at your last meeting. We're estimating $400,000 in revenue based on what the town council approved. So there's two funding things in there. $200,000 would go towards paving in the CCMG, as I mentioned earlier. The other $200,000 would go towards Dan Jones Widening Phase Three Construction. So both of those will go to immediate infrastructure improvements on our town streets. The next one, Stormwater Utility. The Stormwater Utility does review their own budget. They actually reviewed it at their meeting last night and recommended approval, so they've already signed off on it. The town council does have to approve it as well. They continue to provide drainage engineering funding, again, to help us accelerate projects and get them addressed. Typically, when we have drainage issues, people aren't typically very patient about it. And so when we have limited funds to be able to design it, then it makes the projects take longer. And again, that was one of the reasons we started the Stormwater Utility, is that we could be more responsive. So there's some additional engineering money in there to do that. Steve did actually increase some minor drainage repairs this year. The majority of what we do are kind of smaller projects, it may be $4,000 or $5,000 a year, a drainage ditch that needs to be graded, or maybe there's an underdrain needs to be installed, or an underdrain's clogged and you clean those up. And even though those are $4,000 or $5,000 projects, they typically add up to be pretty big numbers. So Steve had some increased funding in that area. As you guys are aware, we have to, we are an MS4, which means we have to comply with the Clean Water Act. So we have to do inspections, we have to do storm sewer cleaning, we have to do best management practices for our MS4 permit. And so all of those things are funded out of the Stormwater Utility Budget. And then there is some funding in as well for Stormwater Capital Improvements. The project that will likely bid either later this year or early next year is for Pines of Avon. That project's been in design. If you guys are familiar with Pines of Avon, they've had problems with their pond staging and actually flooding into the streets. And so we are looking at upsizing some of the pipes in there to actually get the water out and prevent that problem from happening. So we'll bid that next year and hopefully move forward with construction on that. The Stormwater Utility Budget as a whole has actually gone down a little bit from last year. It was 1.5 million last year, and it's down to $1,325 this year. And that's, we had a couple of years where we were spending more based on capital improvements. We've cleared some of those capital improvements from our project books, and so we're actually starting to reduce it down now closer to the amount of revenue that we actually bring in. The last one I'm going to talk about is the Economic Development Income Tax Fund. And so we commonly refer to it as EDIT. EDIT can pretty much be used for anything. So this is, there's kind of a wide range of things being provided in here. A portion of this is for economic development. That was originally at one time, we had to use it for economic development, but the uses of that have changed over the years. So we are doing some job training incentive programs for a couple of our new employers who are moving to town, Sephora and Lakeside Book Company. We always put money in there, we always like cross our fingers in budget money for a reorganization study or financial analysis. So there's some money in there for that, if we can find a partner who's interested in doing that. In the past, we have done leadership training. It's been a few years, and I've had a turnover of some staff. I find, and I know Chief Stoops finds this leadership training really important to our culture in town and how we communicate about things. So I budgeted some money next year to redo some of that leadership training that we We also do provide some community organization support in the EDIT fund. The Chamber of Commerce is funded out of EDIT. We do also provide some money to the library and the Hendricks County Economic Development Partnership. I do want to share with you guys, because I know sometimes this can be an issue, I did actually increase, because of John's retirement, next year, we did have some additional funds in EDIT. And so I did propose an increase in the contribution to the Chamber of Commerce. We are, last year, we gave $10,000. Next year, I was proposing to provide them $30,000. I've had some preliminary discussions with Tom Downard about how that would look if we were going to give them additional money. And we've talked about having him help supplement some of John's time as John retires, that he would help us with some of the economic development. We had also talked about potentially them helping us with the Make My Move program. Obviously, you guys didn't renew that, so that may be something that I want to revisit, but I originally put in 30 and it still worked. So if that's something you guys want to provide me guidance on, if you'd like or dislike, that'd be fine. We also fund police technology out of the EDIT fund, computers, cameras, radios, et cetera, whatever the police department may need for technology. There is some money in here as well to support the Dan Jones Widening Phase Three Construction. I know last year, we had some conversations about the HSA contributions. There is a portion of money that comes out of here that's our HSA contributions. Have not proposed a change in that, so it's the same as what we did last year. There is funding as well for our Maintenance Improvement Program, which is our paving and our road maintenance. I mentioned earlier that John is retiring, and the direction the council gave me was that we would look at doing like a monthly contract. So there is a little bit of funding in there to do a contract, potentially with John to still assist us after he retires on a contract basis. We are also making a move towards, as we go into the new Civic Center, is to be paperless. So there's some money in there to be able to digitize documents, as well as you guys funded the life cycle modeling, and that's an ongoing annual thing. I was hoping to do that presentation for you guys at your work session. It wasn't quite ready. It'll probably be on your October work session, but there is, we had an upfront, more substantial contribution on that. The yearly piece is substantially less, so there is some money in there as well. Last year, we added up, or this year, we added a part-time Main Street Coordinator. As you guys are, remember, we made a commitment to Easton Gray that we would provide a certain number of events each year, and we will need someone to help manage the community, the community room at the Civic Center, and so the Main Street Coordinator would be that position. We budgeted for half the year this year, but we budgeted for that full position for That is my quick and dirty budget summary of changes. I try really hard every year to bring you guys a balanced budget, and so I will share if all these goals in here, and part of my staff and my goal is, we take the things that you guys have given us, the Capital Improvement Plan, and we put those things into the budget, and my goal is always to bring you a balanced budget. I don't always accomplish it, but this year, I can happily say that unless you guys have changes you want to make, this, the entire budget, the general fund and the non-general fund, all of the funds are actually balanced. So unless you guys have concerns or you dislike anything I've suggested, you would be able to fully fund everything that I've shared with you. And with that, I will be quiet and answer any questions you guys may have.
My question is regarding the rainy day fund. You show a $250,000 professional services in there, what is that for?
So Greg always recommends that we budget $250,000 every year, and that would be if there was an emergency. So say we had a tornado that goes through town, if we didn't have funds available to be able to respond to that emergency, we could use those rainy day funds. And so normally, we budget that, and I don't think in any of the 20 years that I've ever worked here that we've ever spent a dime of that. But again, it's set aside for an emergency situation.
Thank you.
Is that the money then that we end up moving over to increase that fund balance?
It's not necessarily, it doesn't really work directly like that, but in theory, yes, because if you don't spend it, then it rolls into, it just rolls back into that. Really what you normally take that you switch, because remember, now we're switching between funds. If you spent, so if you have $1 million and you spend $250,000, then you only have $750,000. If we don't do it, you still just have $1 million. But you guys are trying to grow your fund balance. So we normally pull the money out of the general fund, and we roll that into the rainy day fund to cover it. And that's done by underspending the general fund budget. That's how we normally do that.
And usually do that by resolution right at the end of the year, is when you guys actually transfer that, you're allowed to make that kind of a transfer. The idea of the automatic appropriation, if you want to say, is, the idea is that if there were like a terrible weather event, it may be impossible for you guys to get together and approve something. I agree with Greg that it should be appropriated. That's what it's all about, is just try, continuity, if continuity of meetings and all that gets to be where you can't meet, you've got the appropriation, you guys could make decisions, and your clerk treasurer can write the checks that you would want her to write because she has an appropriation in her books. And that would be a thing, but since you mentioned rainy day, yeah, remember to go back in December when you do your cleanup ordinance, which is your transfers between same series and things like that. And that's when you would generally, although you can do it any time of the year, your customer's been to look at that toward the end of the year and say, hey, let's move some more money over there.
I just have a very quick question. Do we have a schedule on cleaning the storm drains in the manner that they are all done in a certain period of time, 10 years, five years?
We do, yeah. We have a list, and we've rotated, and it takes us about 12 years to go through all of them. We do about three to four neighborhoods a year.
Thank you.
No other questions on that? So we'll move on. Public hearing, 2026?
Well, so the next item was technically your budget discussion. So we will not talk about budget at your next meeting, and then we have advertised the adoption for the October 9th meeting. So I just, I put this on here. If you guys don't have any discussion, that's fine, but this is kind of your guys' opportunity. If you want something to be changed before it shows up at the adoption, this is the time to bring it up, share it with me so that my staff and I have time to make changes, and so that whatever we present to you on October 9th is reflective of what you guys are willing to vote to approve. So if you have nothing, that's fine, but...
I've already shared my...
Correct.
I guess I don't remember us talking about, I mean, I remember us talking about the life cycle modeling, but not approving it, so...
You guys denied the Placer AI, which was that software, but you guys did approve the life cycle modeling. The life cycle modeling is the pavement management system. So we have our existing pavement management system that goes backwards. The life cycle modeling is going to project going forward from there, and you guys did approve that contract.
It's not the one where it geo-fences, tells us how long people spend in our community?
Nope, that was the Placer AI, and you're correct. That was, you guys did not approve that. But the life cycle modeling, you did.
Clarifying that.
No problem.
One question underneath Town Manager, summer intern is a line item, but there's no dollars attributed to that. I thought I read somewhere we were getting an intern.
Great question, Greg. I think it's actually, we did put an intern in, and this came from actually a discussion with Angel and I. We have a marcom intern that's actually in, and it's in the EDIT budget. And we put, it's just a summer, yeah, it's 8,000. And so the idea is, we have National Night Out, we have Night at the Park, we have all kinds of events that take up a lot of Angel's time. And so what we thought is during that time, it would be nice to have like a content provider or someone who can kind of assist. And again, a lot of times, we can, it'd be really good marketing and communications stuff in the busiest time of year for Angel. stuff in the busiest time of year for Angel to have a little bit of help that we could get, you know, a young college student or somebody like that who could help us. It's $8,000 for 10 weeks and so we, we did.
Put it on the non-general fund versus the general fund.
Correct. It's an Edit. That's correct.
Can you remind me again what facilities means is?
Yes, good question because that's a new, uh, that's a new thing for last year or for this year. Last year, the 150,000, we budgeted for a portion of the operating cost for the Civic Center. So the facilities budget Greg is for the Civic Center. So our agreement with the school corporation is that the town and the school would agree on a budget for the maintenance of the Civic Center. The town would pay 55%, the school would pay 45%. So that's the budget that Dr. Wyndham and I put together that would be for the maintenance of the Civic Center.
Thank you.
And again, we won't pay for all of that. It still shows up in your budget because you guys have to appropriate it and then whatever we spend, we will bill to the school corporation for 45% of that, which will then show up on the other side on the revenue side.
That was it. Chief, can, can you remind me how many officers you had planned on hiring next year?
We currently have two vacancies. We're asking for three more positions next year.
So the Kingston street lease, uh, or the Kingston, yeah, street lease is under which fund now?
Shelby put it in the food and beverage fund.
So the Main Street Coordinator is in there for 64,480, but then also under the food and beverage, there's a program and event coordinator in there for 64,480. Is that a duplicate or is that?
It is not a duplicate. Um, hold on, let me get there, Dawn. So I think it looks the same Dawn because it's the same pay grade. Um, yeah, the, it's the same pay grade. So the, the program and event coordinator is an existing employee that we already have. That's who does the program and events in the parks.
Okay.
Now it's the same pay grade, so that's why it looks like the same dollar amount.
Anyone else with questions? Okay, we'll move on. Hold the public hearing for the 2026 budget. We will open the public hearing at 7:43 PM. No one coming forward. We'll close the public hearing at 7:43 PM. Move on for the quote for the community garden fencing.
Hello again, Shelby Pride Parks and Recreation Director. Um, last year in 2024, we started a community garden. We started it very small. We didn't know how it would go. Um, it was extremely successful. This year it was again extremely successful and we actually had a waitlist. So if somebody backed out, we could still fulfill the garden. So we have built over here, we call it the Farkins property, but to the west of Town Hall Park, um, this community garden. We would like to expand it and we built a fence around it and it did not last. Um, we built a decent sized fence. It's eight to 10 feet and a deer still ran into the top of it and knocked some of it over. Um, so we were on the hunt for, uh, legitimate fencing, um, commercial grade fencing and we would like to expand the garden. Like I said, we actually want to double it. Um, so my events programmer did the dirty work here. He, he got, he actually asked for four quotes. Um, two of them responded, two of them did not respond. Um, Fence Wizards was the lowest quote at $25,960. Um, it would offer a two-year warranty, everything that we would need. The post would be concrete in the ground, I mean, commercial grade, um, locked with, you know, key access. That's what we currently have now for our, uh, community garden growers. Um, so my, my request to you tonight is one, um, to award the quote to Fence Wizards, two, to, oh wait, to approve this, then award the quote to Fence Wizards. Um, I do have funds, we have underspent in the program and events fund, um, so far this year, so there are funds available in that. I do have contractual funds available still and then equipment funds available still. Um, so I'm asking for that and then for the clerk treasurer to make payment as soon
What are the total of the funds available that you mentioned?
In programs, I have 63,000 on, do you need exact numbers or just round?
Round them.
63,000 contractual, 50,000 equipment, 90,000.
That's what you have left?
And this picture depicts what the fence would look like?
Yes, yep.
My only question is this, is an eight-foot fence going around a garden?
Yes.
Does it need to be eight foot?
Yeah, yes.
Who are you trying to keep out?
The deer. Deer. Yes.
Is it just a straight up and down fence or is it, does it span out?
It'll just be a straight up and down fence. We have the option to do, um, the barbed wire at the top of it. We, that's a little overkill for what we need, so we, we opted to not put that within the quote.
Yeah, I was talking more of, you know.
Yeah, it's just a straight up and down fence.
So what was your other quote? You said two, you got four quotes, two didn't bid.
Yeah.
D-7991, I didn't.
So almost double what Fence Wizards.
Do you know anything about Fence Wizards?
I personally do not. Um, my event staff has had the conversation. They actually came here and looked at the garden, um, the fence that we currently have, made the suggestion. We asked them, what would it be to double that? And so they, this was the quote that they gave us.
Any discussion, questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Dan, can I do these all three together?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we approve Shelby's request to install this new fence. I'm going to, uh, make a motion that we award the quote to, uh, Fence Wizards for the amount of $25,960 and that we authorize the clerk treasurer to make that payment.
Second.
Thank you. Kathy, roll call please.
Four.
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 Thank you so much.
Next is Resolution 2025-25, Mexico. Matt, I cannot talk tonight. Maximum levy appeal for the annexation and growth.
Yes, your financial advisor, uh, Greg Garitas has recommended that you file for a maximum levy appeal, um, of $1,050,000. That is, uh, 825,000 worth, I'm sorry.
1,500,000.
1,500,000, I'm sorry, 825,000 for the three-year growth factor and 225,000 for the annexation appeal. The actual weight structure now slightly different than in years past, but the town has pretty consistently made, uh, this appeal because of your rapid growth. And again, uh, in order for the documents to be submitted to the state for consideration, you all have to authorize it and that's what this resolution does.
I may just add real quickly, the general fund budget that we presented to you all is making the assumption that you guys approved this for a levy appeal. And you may remember this last year that we had to back, have the potential to back out. Well, in this situation, last year I made you a list of what if we didn't get it. I didn't do that this year because any change we make, if we don't get the levy appeal, we're going to have to back all those things up. So we're not going to hire three police officers, we're not going to give pay increases. All of that stuff would not be able to happen. The incentives and things that we were going to try to provide in the general fund, all of those things would come out. Literally every change from last year, if we don't get it, would have to come out. Now, there is a possibility that the DLGF could approve something, maybe they only approve 800,000, then we'll have to work, work backwards for that. So there is a chance depending on what the DLGF were to approve, we may even have to have a quick meeting once we find out what they do to make those decisions. Um, but again, I just want to make sure that, that you understood that the general fund budget, if you guys don't approve this, the general fund budget I sent to you guys wouldn't, wouldn't work.
By a million fifty thousand.
By a million fifty thousand dollars.
Right amount.
How much?
A million fifty thousand. So again, we'd have to cut a million fifty from what I've presented to you guys. Again, I don't expect that to happen. I don't think, I don't expect that we won't get anything, but we may not get the full million fifty.
And if we don't approve it, we lose it.
Correct. Yes, especially the, the three-year growth factor, just a reminder, this is the last year we can ever do a three-year growth factor. It goes away. Annexation, we continue to do, but that 825 would continue forward forever as well. So if you don't do it, we lose it forever too.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-25, a resolution and petition to appeal for an increase above the maximum levy as presented.
Second.
Kathy, roll call please.
Four.
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 Four. You just need to change the titles on this document.
Next is Resolution 2025-26, the inter-local agreement with the town of Brownsburg.
Yes, we bring to you this, uh, resolution which would approve the attached inter-local agreement. When you closed your town court, theoretically your cases should have gone to the Hendricks County Courts. The Hendricks County judges in the management of their workload have assigned some cases to the other courts, the town courts and the county. And one of the group of, uh, cases that was assigned out of the county courts were our cases. So all Avon cases have been assigned to Brownsburg. We, uh, advised Brownsburg of that and they weren't quite sure about it, but Anna got that all worked out. And so this inter-local agreement, uh, then is the authority under which, um, they will handle it, they are required to handle it. The real import of this, this really says that, uh, they will keep the, uh, filing fees, they will pay for everything in the operation of the court. We, they're not asking for you to make a contribution, which is great. Um, this really says that your only expense will, you will provide your own prosecutor and that would be us. I mean, traditionally we've done that anyway when you had a court. So whether it's code enforcement, traffic enforcement, whatever it is, we would do that work for you. You would pay that expense, not Brownsburg because they're paying for the court. So that is the basic format. The town council for Brownsburg has already approved this and they've, if we, if, uh, so I would recommend that you, um, approve it so that Brownsburg will start hearing our cases.
So when you say they pay their fees, you're referencing Exhibit A, those fees on Exhibit A?
Yes, Exhibit A is the actual agreement, uh, right after the resolution. Oh, that Exhibit A, yeah, that is the, the fees, yes. The filing fees, those are filing fees.
Now, these are just town ordinance violations. This is nothing like police traffic stops or anything like that, or is that part of this?
It's part of this.
Okay. So Sean's looked at this, he's on board?
Yes, I think David could confirm that for you. David has actually been the point person for solving this problem, so.
I'm excited about this. I appreciate all the work this has gone into.
So we don't owe them additional, they're just going to charge the offender the court cost and then they keep the court cost payment?
Correct. We, I mean, there are some situations in which a town will, um, ask you to support the operation of the court. We're pleased that Brownsburg has not requested that. They've, they're, they're willing to take responsibility for that and think they can handle it. They'd ask us for some information about the number of cases that we normally file in a year and they think that that'll be fine and they obviously just didn't want to be responsible for providing a prosecutor. So, and when you had your own court, we did that anyway and you, you already paid for that. None of these will be new cost at all, but yeah, they're not asking you to make contribution to the operation of the court. So we, we think you, uh, we'd recommend you approve.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2025-26, inter-local agreement with town of Brownsburg as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Kathy, roll call please.
Four.
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 Dan, it's legal counsel report time.
Nothing, uh, additional tonight. Thank you though.
Okay, the second of two public comments. If anyone would like to come forward. No one stepping forward. We'll move on to counsel comment. Counsel calendar. I'll just say, the next meeting is September 25th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. There is no work session beforehand. Meeting adjourned.